This program is brought to you by the Kuchiching Area Prevention and Education Coalition. CAPE exists to reduce youth and young adult alcohol and other drug use by promoting safe and healthy choices among all community members.
Call the meeting to order at 5 o'clock. Roll call, Mike Holden.
Here.
Michelle Hebner.
Here.
Tony Corpey. Jennifer Windows.
Here.
Ted Saxton, here. Terry Murray.
Here.
Roxanne Schockstedt-Diet.
Here.
Kevin Grover.
Here.
Ella Bar Jeffries. And please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Come on.
Second.
Got a motion by Michelle and a second by Mike. Any further discussion?
The only thing I can do is make a couple comments. Under action items number four, there is no action needed when you receive my superintendent evaluation, so just cross that out if you would please. Eight, nine, and ten, we have to get a motion and a second to approve those. And there was one other typo on, I think, number one, or I should say, or number four, evaluation form. It's the same one, but no substantial.
Wait, didn't you just say that we weren't, didn't it need to do number four?
No, we need to do it, but you don't need a motion.
Oh, okay.
We just received my stuff, your evaluation.
All right.
We don't need a motion and a second, but it should say evaluation form. That's all, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Public open forum, there's nobody, no guests in attendance? All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Approve the consent agenda as printed.
Come on.
Second.
To make just a few comments. Couple questions, the number...
Don't I have to read it first?
No.
Oh, that was why. I get it now.
Okay. On number six, the LPN position were replacement asked, Leah Bacon was in that position. She's now the school nurse. It's for the most part what you would consider a full-time LPN. I mean, they don't work the summer, obviously, but school days, they work, you know, stays is at 8:30 to 3:30 or in full, you know, full days for the most part. When we get over on second page, number 29, just in case you're interested, the attic service, same company we've used, it was 19,650 last year, it's a 10% increase, which is not uncommon, but I just, just, I'm going to add that up. Number 30, the painting of the green floor, it was painted before, if you are aware or not, and I recommend we do this. It costs us full over $3,000 to paint it and suck that paint up after the season last year. You know, $17,000 is a lot, but not only that, it took our employees, I'm sure, a week to clean it up. Our machine that we sucked the hallway, cleaned the hallway, that's what they're sucking the paint up. We're going to use the scoreboard donation money to pay for it. I mean, it pays for itself over five years roughly, but like now, summer hockey, all the lines would be done. Instead, they're going to put some of them back on, take two, two days for the people to do it. So, we did get two votes, one locally, one out of town. The out of town one is through the Better Company, we bought our boards, they recommended the group. It's roughly half price the local contractor, so we're going out of town, just giving heads Number 32, just mentioned a normal deal we've allowed the city to use for the 4th of July, the fire department shoot out back, they're very good about cleaning up. I would say I'm happy to help if they want to use the property and we can work with them. And the last thing is when we get to 47, you're just receiving the 10-year plan, if you've looked at all the documents, my recommendation, well, two, one, I'm supposed to, the facility committee, which is Terry, Mike, and Rox, I'm supposed to work with you to find a date so that we can meet with Tom and have some more in-depth to look at. It's open to everyone to look at, but mainly look at the closer years. When you look 10, 11 years out, I mean, there are things that we know are going to have to be done down there. I mean, there's roofs that are roughly 10 years old, that might, but some of this stuff is just kind of filaments enough to be honest because, you know, don't have it all. The other thing I wanted to mention is, because I, to my wit's end, but we've had it out and hopefully we get somewhere, that train project where we met, they met in February, we've yet to get anything. I set a deadline, and if I'm done with them, we will have a report on Wednesday, the 19th, or I talk to attorney and they can start working with them. Again, I want a good report. It says drawn, we're getting done, you know, and they said it'd be a short turnaround time. I mean, their original presentation wasn't bad, but, you know, again, we need that document to be doing what we're doing right now.
How much did you pay them so far?
We paid them $1,000.
Okay.
But, you know, there is a contract. I mean, they were supposed to be done in 14 weeks.
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's where we're at.
I think that's all right.
But anyway, if you're looking, you can look at the whole thing, there's capital in the long-term facility in there, but, I mean, right now, keep in mind, we're, it has like the 2021 year in or 2122, it says on top, but I urge you to look, look at the whole thing, but look mainly at the next couple of years, that's what's in the forefront, you know, of the near. That's all I have right now. Other than, is there any time in the near future, and I'm just going to speak to, would I say again, Terry, Mike, and Rox, is there a time that would be good to sit down with Tom? You know, we'll print all the documents out, all in front of us there.
You want it during the day, I assume?
It's whatever you want. Tom said he would meet whenever it works for you guys, you know?
Like how soon?
I don't want to get, I mean, I would like to do it, if we could, before the 4th of July. You know, that way it gives, you know, if we come up with some ideas, we can get it out to the rest of the board because we need to approve it next month. Anyone else can have ideas, questions, we can have conversation, but that is our committee to kind of look and flush things over. So, I mean, I mean, it could be after the 4th, I was just, you know...
I could do the 26th at, you're gone.
I'll be gone at...
I mean, whatever, it can be after the 4th, I just don't want to get to, the 15th is our next meeting, and to do something on the, you know, 13th or something, isn't time to get it out to everyone.
Sure. I can do it, anytime before that, 26th.
What, can you do it, Terry?
24th.
24th to 25th, or 20th to 21st, or if you want to give it down.
24th, 25th's good for me.
Okay, are we looking at, maybe, could we do the 25th at 1:30?
Yeah.
Will that work?
Works for me.
Okay.
And I will put out after that to the board as a whole, I mean, if we, you know, if we have some things that have changed or add some things or whatever, try and communicate. And the same thing, if you want to look through everyone else, those things you have ideas, it's a working document as always, you know, so. Perfect.
Approve the consent agenda as printed. I have a motion by Michelle and a second by Rox. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Moving on to the action items. Action item number one, resolution of acceptance of gifts and donations. Whereas School Board Policy 706 establishes the guidelines for the acceptance of gifts or donations to the district, whereas the International Falls School District Board encourages the support of the district's educational programs through gifts or donations that meet the goals and objectives of the school district. Whereas Minnesota Statute 465.03 states that the school board may accept a gift or device of real or personal property only by the adoption of a resolution approved by two-thirds of its members. Therefore, be it resolved, the School Board of International Falls Public Schools, ISD 361, accepts with appreciation the following gifts, donations, and grants received by the school district. Mrs. Wenberg's, Mrs. Wenberg Anderson's class for hat days, FES, oh, okay, I see, they raised that. FES gym equipment for $206. Broncos baseball boosters, $80.77. Kerry Park Hockey Tournament, $2,335. Rainy Lake Sports Fishing Club, $1,000. Donations to Weight Room Wellness from, oh, for the girls' hockey boosters, $120.54. PCA Mill of International Falls, $750. PCA Mill of International Fall, oh, that's for both of them then?
No, they donated two 6-foot by 10-foot...
Oh, they donated this stuff, okay, I got you. Two 6-by-10 American flags. And Cantor Electric, $570.85. I have a motion, I don't have a motion yet. I'll entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Rox and a second by Jen. Any further discussion? Call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It carries unanimously. Action items, right here. Okay.
Do you have the resolution?
Yep. Yeah, I got that in order, it was, oh, no, that's not it. Yeah, let's see. Why do I stack these in order so weird? Here you go.
That one.
Yeah, okay.
So you want to read that?
Yeah. And then you can see you're coming. Approve the 2019-2020 MSHSL Resolution for Membership and watch the MSHL video, Why We Play. Resolve, is it missing a line here? That's fine. Resolve that Governing Board of School District Number 361, County of Kuchiching, State of Minnesota delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic athletic and fine art events referred to in MN Statutes Section 128(c).01 to the Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further resolve that the high schools, high school listed below, Falls High School, authorized by this, the Governing Board of said school district or school, renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in approved inner-school activities sponsored by the said league and its various subdivisions. Further resolve that the Governing Board hereby adopts the Constitution, Bylaws, Rules, and Regulations of said league and all amendments thereto as the same as are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook, on file at Office of the School District or as appears on the league's website, as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities, and that the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and supervision for such activities are assigned to the official representatives identified by the Governing Board. Signing the Resolution for Membership affirms that this Governing Board has viewed the Why We Play training video, which defines the purpose and value of education-based athletic and activity programs and assists school communities in communicating a shared common language. Member schools must develop and publicize administrative procedures to address eligibility suspensions related to code of student conduct violations for students participating in activity programs by member schools. The above resolution was adopted by the Governing Board of this school district and is recorded in the official minutes of said board and hereby is certified by the State Commissioner of Education as provided by laws.
That's his first.
That's good. I will entertain a motion at this time.
Come on.
Second.
I got a motion by Michelle and a second by Mike, and Roxanne has a comment about the video.
I have a question and a comment. The first, the question is, do all coaches watch the video?
They see this as part of, there's an online, I don't know what you call it.
Refresher every year.
Refresher, continuing, like clock hours that they have to do, and this is part of it.
Okay.
You know, as well as there could be, if I was a golf coach, you know, golf rules, and there's, you know, heat stuff for, you know, like football and those sports. There's, there's a variety of things that they have to do, and it's tracked electronically if they'll ask to make sure it's done before they coach.
Okay. And then I have a comment, I guess, because I've had people call me about coaching, and I know I've had some discussion with you and others, is, and when I see that video and then I hear people calling me saying that some of the coaches are yelling in the students' faces and, and things like that, I think that, you know, this serves as not just something that you check on a checklist and, and say, now it's done for the year, but it needs to serve as something to say, and we will not tolerate when coaches are yelling in the face, faces of students. That goes against what the video says. So I'd just like that, like to say that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call it to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, resolution regarding Board Control of Student Activities. Whereas the district's implementation of Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB, Statement Number 84, fiduciary activities will require changes in the accounting for student activity funds, including that school boards have control of all student activities of the public schools in the district, and that all money received or expended for extracurricular activities shall be recorded in the same manner as other revenues and expenditures of the district. Therefore, be it resolved that this School Board of the International Falls Public Schools, Independent School District Number 361 directs the district's administration to implement the requirements of GASB Statement Number 84. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Terry and a second by Jen. All right, any further discussion?
Two things, just, one, I gave you a piece here, and I should have got it attached, but it gives a general, kind of, what's going on, and Stacy also gave a supporting sheet, and she can speak more intelligently about it than I can. But for the most part, I take a decent example, Stacy's correcting me if I'm wrong, is, take something like student council. Okay, student council is a group that raises money, does things, it's a student organization, okay? Legally, that needs to be under the Board Control of that money. There's things on here that used to be allowable practice, maybe are or are not now allowable practice. An example, and like it or not, there's changes, buying a gift card, for example, and giving it away, not an allowable deal. Money raised by students is, like for student council, is supposed to be used for the student body as a whole. And again, not saying it's right or wrong, you can agree with it, disagree, we have to follow this move, changes. There's some things that have changed over time, and if you read the article, we're probably not as bad off as some districts, we're probably not as good off as maybe some districts. But an example, I mean, years ago, student council used to give a scholarship away, I think it was $500, to one of the board members when they were a senior, okay? That's not a, something we changed a few years back, but it's an example that money raised by student council by the whole school body needs to be used in essence for the whole school body. Now, there are some ways to work around some things, you know, for instance, the work at elementary, they do, is it pennies per play, or something like that?
Student council, the pennies per play, we do relay these ads.
Okay, technically, you know, if we took in that money, we can donate to another group. Now, they came through with some, hang on, we got to be, as long as money flows in and goes right out, it is going to be acceptable, like something like that. But there may be other things that we have to work with a booster club, or with Pi, or someone like that, to do some of the things that we've done, because technically, you as a board, you as a district, there's certain things we can't do technically. We can't donate to an organization, for instance, you with me? And so, that's part of, I don't know if you want to...
Yeah.
What's that?
Can I interrupt?
Yeah, yeah.
Please.
So, first, it's like backup, I'm just, not too far, but I want to back up, just a little bit. So, a year or so ago, I joined the Advisory Committee on Financial Management and Reporting at the state level. The purpose of that committee is to advise Minnesota Department of Education on matters of school accounting, budgeting, reporting. We are required to use what's called UFRS, Uniform Financial Accounting and Reporting Those are all regulated by generally accepted accounting principles, all right? So, and because we're government-led, the standards that those are based on come down from GAAP, what's called GASB, it's called the GASB, it's called Governmental Accounting Standards Board. That Board, Board's mission is to establish and improve the standards of state and local government accounting and financial reporting. So your audit, the way your audit's laid out, that dictates what's in your audit and how we have to report it. So we have to follow all of these standards that come down through the chain of federal, GASB, and then we also have state legislation that says what we can and can't do, and then we have our auditing firms, state auditors. That Advisory Committee formed, GASB, some committee a year ago, because there's two standards coming out, GASB, fiduciary activities, which Kevin was talking about, and another one on leases. The fiduciary activities refine how we can report student activities, extracurriculars, by statute. So right now, the state allows, used to allow, under Board Control and not under Board Control, and that only refers to the financial reporting of those activities. They were always under your control, you're responsible for them, but in terms of student council, an associate high school league, prom, the cheerleading groups, and robotics, those groups have funds outside of the district over here, and that's this Financial Accounting Standards Report that you would get separately. This is going away. Our group, through, on that committee, is state auditor's office, CPAs from Minnesota School District, our accounting firms, our firms on it, myself, other agencies. To that end, we recommended that the Statute of 123(b), 49, extracurricular activities had to be changed to align with GASB, because otherwise, we would have been reporting activity that was in conflict with the accounting standards. So that got changed in May. So therefore now, all student activities have to be under Board Control. A student activity, we're not talking sixth grade field trip, elementary school projects, we're talking activities that are not offered for credit, are generally conducted outside of the hours, and are, the content of the activity is determined primarily by the people participants. What you have in front of you is, so going back to UFRS, that statute by law has the authority to dictate how we have to report all of our finances. Our committee is now reworking inside of that manual, inside of UFRS, what was called Chapter 14 Student Activities, which is the first page that you have in front of you on old guidance. So this committee that I'm on is basically rewriting the standards for how we are going to report student activities. And in doing that, we've been able to make some agreements on some changes, others we have not been able to make agreements with. So this is a draft of what is going to be allowable, and we're able to make some changes. Basic premises for these activities, this is not being raised by the students or students. So going back to student council, the money that the student council, who can raise, can only be spent on those students. So we can pay for their lodging and go on trips, we can buy them t-shirts for their group activity. They can't buy t-shirts for another group. It has, it's money raised for the students, by the students, for the students. Those activities are going to remain. So there's some good things that are going to come out of it, there's some bad things. Part of the problem is, is we're talking, this is millions of dollars across the state. This is, for us, it's small, for other districts, it's millions of dollars that are sitting in these activity accounts. When you bring them in, it impacts the financial statements, because now they're going to have, all that money is now, you're going to see every month on your board reports, so you'll be approving the checks, you'll be approving the donations and accepting them. There's going to be a very detailed reporting structure on how we're going to do it, and so it's coming in as, it's going to be a restricted account. So you'll see that on your fund balance reports that you get from you starting July 1, because this is effective July 1. There'll be separate accounts that you're going to start seeing now, and the standard for how we have to report it. So, yes, donations is a problem, is still being debated heavily. I don't have a lot of good guidance. We have written what we think we are going to agree to, but in the last meeting, again, state auditor offices, especially, uh, some of it. So we're hoping to get clear direction from the Trade General's Office. What, because it has to be public purpose, that becomes a problem under government.
I have a, I have a couple of questions.
So a lot of people will say, well, why can't you do this? Well, because we can't.
Yeah.
Not because I said so.
Yeah, it'd be nice, it'd be nice, because it might ruffle some feathers when we do it, or just because we're, you got to change some things, so it'd be nice to just say, hey, no, that we, that we have no choice, kind of thing.
Yeah. So there's a lot of work to be done yet. I still have to rewrite our internal policies, we're still going to hold to a lot of things. But again, it's a great opportunity I have to hopefully maybe reshape a little bit of it, where you'll make some concessions, to make a law for a little more flexibility on some things that we didn't in the past. So that's it.
So my first question is, should the booster clubs, should we, they be planning on forming their own 501(c)(3)'s, I know like football has?
Boosters are, and this has not...
I thought maybe some that they, okay. Well, I'm just saying, if, it'd be easier for, to donate to them than to us sometimes, if you're trying to help.
Boosters are supposed to be a 501(c)(3).
They're supposed to be, but not all are.
Yeah, I don't think that they all are. Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe we can encourage them to do that, that, that's, it might make things easier. And then the other one is, so what happens when prom raises $100,000 hypothetically, and spends $99,000, what do you do with the...
So, outside right now, that money's trapped in this financial thing, which in reality, all it is, is it's an asset in the liability count, it's two accounts, it's an in and an out, and then you get a report on it. Going forward, when it comes into the district, it's going to have, those two accounts probably are going to be, have 15 different accounts, and they're going to go into two or three different sub-accounts and even another fund, depending on the activity. So it's made it incredibly more complex.
Yeah, I'm sure.
The money will, again, the same rules are going to apply, as I know, the groups are supposed to have a purpose, we're supposed to have minimum, you know, they don't need to raise $100,000, they need $5,000 to operate, they shouldn't have $20,000 on the books. So there's still going to be that, if they cease to exist, where does the money go? You know, but a lot of districts have, their class has it now, their group has it now, so these are activities that are outside of the school day. Even, you know, in football, all of our athletic, all of our athletics are considered extracurricular, they just have to have separate accounts. They don't go and raise money, they do it through their booster class. They're not raising money, technically they don't. These groups can't pay for salaries, so those are, you'll see that on there, they cannot pay for employees, we have to pay for that. So some of those things are still going to stay there. It will tighten up the economy, because it's going to get audited, and we'll see, maybe, we'll deal with it, for some districts, they could get dinged on their audit because of the lack of, over three seats. So there are going to be some changes. But there's some positives.
Thank you, anybody else?
One, one quick question, the paying for the employees, this just kind of came to my mind, is that, I know in swimming, in the past, we've given a donation to the school, and then the school has paid, is that still not okay?
It's, well, no, it's, it's going to be acceptable, but it's actually on...
July's document.
Well, it's on the negotiations as well with 331, because as this comes in and as part of this, is, and we've been talking, talking for two years, no, but they are considered an employee, even though it's a volunteer coach, and just you swimming as an example, they give $500, we have to recognize them, we recognize them as volunteer, but really they're an employee, and so we're going to go forward to 331, because they negotiate salaries. And so we're gonna go forward to 331, because they negotiate salaries and figure out how we're gonna deal with this, because as an employee, we can't pay technically two employees for doing the same job, you know, exactly the same job, a different wage. So either we're gonna come up with a separate, like a volunteer coach, like assistant to the assistant, you know, and define, we're gonna have to make sure they're making a minimum wage, or if they're gonna have to pay a volunteer coach, it's gonna have to be the assistant coach, you know, whatever that rate is. And so we're gonna try and deal with it, but the reality is, we can't just give a five hundred dollar stipend and say, thanks for helping out, you're an employee, and we gotta define what that means, so it is on...
So that could be redefining for some of the sports as well, the employees that they have.
There's a, there's one or two that pretty much pay the assistant wage, you know, we have to take taxes out, you know, pay benefits, all that, you know, which, again, they cover, you know, they give us three thousand dollars, the employee might only get twenty-two hundred, you know, we've started doing that, where we did, but, um...
No.
Did we start?
No.
We're, well, we have to start doing that, um, but it's, it's gonna be a conversation, we have to come up so that, you know, as our pay structure gets fair, it's equitable, and, um, you know...
So then what if, what if that moves to, okay, instead of going through that and that doesn't get approved, that they get paid some certain amount, does it get to be just truly volunteer then, if they don't get paid volunteer, are they then still just truly volunteer?
Well, they could be a volunteer coach, I mean, that could be, you know, um, and again, if someone wants to do something outside of us, so we, you know, but the thing is, 501(c)(3)'s, like these boosters typically couldn't have employees.
Right.
You know, that's why they went through us, was, you know, we could recognize them, you know, most schools are in the same point, I mean, we're, we're no different than, you know, the others are making the change, because now's the time to make the change, like it or not, some of the boosters and groups aren't gonna like it, but it's not our deal.
Right. Okay.
Jen, you have something?
Who's probably gonna be affected the most? Like, who is, which groups are, like, like, I mean, student council raises a lot of funds that they donate to outside...
Student council, probably.
Well, prom could be too.
Prom is, prom is probably the biggest one, um, but prom, well, there's two, the other piece of it is, um, is the fundraising is, is the next big docket item, outside of that is also the sales tax. We're reviewing the sales tax equation with all the fundraisers, because it's all coming to the district now, and, you know, you're limited on how much you can raise in fundraisers before you have to do sales tax. So we are reviewing that as the next big ticket item the group is looking at. We're trying to make it as least impactful to everybody as we can, because again, maybe the group realizes that these are activities for the students, are the benefit of the students, and we wanna maintain that as best as we can, the bump in the road is public purpose. And so that's the donations, we think we've wanted to work around, um, this also impacts scholarships, um, and we think we've gotta work around some of that's been questioned in, so we're kinda kicking it around, trying to decide what we can and can't do, you know, and again, you know, these are CPAs, we've got state auditor office people on our committee and off, so it's, it's being reviewed as best as we can. But for right now, we've got some workarounds, um, like for, like for recess right now, um, we're gonna run it through a separate fund until the committee says, no, we can't do that. Um, so there's gonna be another fund. We have a whole nother fund created as well as this. So if we moved a fund, it created a new fund, um, it created a whole nother coming, it just made it that much more complex.
As long as five hundred comes into the district, we take administrative or anything, if five hundred goes out, for right now, that's gonna be fine for like a relay.
Where, where the issue came into play is, 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 is called administrative involvement, the minute it appears that we have administrative involvement, um, any kind of sense of decision or touching out the money, it then has to be in the general fund, um, scholarships. And, and that is not how we, how we thought, you know, it's a change, and this isn't just the state of Minnesota, this is nationwide, and it, this GASP work also affects counties, cities, this isn't just us, it impacts everybody in different ways.
So as a district, how will we, who and how will we identify who it's gonna affect the most, and how will we communicate to them?
How far along?
So, you know, like ahead of time, right? The people, groups are, are planning their fundraisers, like, you know, how are we gonna get, we're gonna get a letter out to people, because the, the, we've done all this work and this is what we wanted to do, and now we can't do it, is if we know now, how can we communicate it effectively to say, even if we have to say, we don't know all the answers yet, but we know there's gonna be some significant changes that might include this to this, please contact us before you plan your fundraisers, or what, you know what I mean, like, I guess...
They're supposed to be doing all those things already. Even with it all being outside of the board, there is a policy, even not being as, being outside of the board, not under board control, they're still required to file, the fundraising policy, all the same rules are going to apply. It's just a matter of where and how we report the funds. And straight...
Possibly more enforcing.
And more enforcing, yes.
So maybe a review of that then, so that they know, we really have to change our...
This is the first process of bringing it to the board, yeah, all the rules aren't necessarily answered yet, but this is the first step, A, you're aware, and B, we're gonna send a letter to booster clubs with regard...
On the volunteer piece, as a separate...
On the volunteer piece, and again, we don't have an answer until the 331 contract's done, I'm not gonna have an answer on what we're gonna do with that, but they need to know this all, if we're all wants to pay for a booster, um, volunteer coach, they're either gonna have to pay the assistant rate, or somehow agree that we can't pay this person, whoever it is, until we know what is acceptable, and, you know, it is what it, maybe it will be done, you know, by the time fall starts, I don't know, you know, but, um...
The GASP, this GASP work was a very short implementation, typically you get it, you have time, you have a year, you have a year and a half to plan, this basically came out when we had, literally, we started working on it last spring, and it was effective July 1, typically we would have another year, and we requested many states, of course, an extension.
Yeah, I, my only request is that we really do our best to communicate as much as we can ahead of time, even if we don't have all those answers, so that they can plan, and, because it's hard enough to find volunteers and donations, and then feel like you're kinda stumped, and, oh, it's just out of our hands, we wanted, for sure, just at least be proactive about letting groups know if and how it will change their efforts.
A lot of what we talked about is, is booster clubs may have to do more, we may have to go to CPAs for more, or other things that we can't do.
Yeah, more things may have to run through different groups, instead of running through the school, you know, and just, just throwing out, there's, there's a lot of workarounds, you know, for instance, if prom becomes an issue, we may go back, and I'm just going back, Rotary used to, I'm not gonna say do, but, you know, maybe we have to run something through an organization that, you know what, can do some of that stuff, you know, and, and again, it's, we're gonna figure it out, I guess I'm, I'm a believer in, again, where there's a will, there's a way not to, you know, ground the law or the rules, but they've come up with some ideas that, yeah, we couldn't do that, but the booster club could, you know, or Pi could do, you know, and so instead of making the money, you know, we raise, going through us, it goes through one of those groups, I mean, it's not to say, hey, wipe our hands, but we have to work to find a way to make these good things, valued things, still work, but...
Within compliance.
You know, um, that's, that's my, you can, and work through it, and, and, like you say, I'm not trying to push some, you know, Rotary or any other group, but that's the only way, let's work to make it happen still, or, you know, Pi, or if we can do it, like, they found a, at least for time being, you know, because I said, how do you, you know, get rid of this really a recess or, or penny for whatever, oh, they found, at least for time being, as long as we don't touch the money, so to speak, it comes in, it's out, we're gonna be able to do it.
And some would say, you know, you're auditing firms, some are, you know, everybody has their own takeaways then, and what they will, what their view of the, the...
Yeah, I guess my point is just that, however creative we can be, and however, maybe it all works out, just that we are really proactive in explaining that to people, to places that might be impacted, so that they don't have to, like, you know, again, get into a project and then go, yeah, I'm gonna, you know, we're gonna go talk to the school about it, and like, while, you know, four other groups already knew that this had changed, we had to know that, that this had changed, you know what I mean? Like, it's just about, kind of really more broadly saying, all these groups that are so well-supporting our district, that we're making sure that we're not making more work for them, and then eventually you, because then you have to meet with all these different people, but like, there's these broad things that are changing, you know, we might have to, you know, we have to do A, B, and C ahead of time, I think, would be better. A, a good, a good step is what my suggestion, sometimes you don't find out until it's too late.
Do we, I'm assuming we maintain a list of the booster clubs, uh, whoever's around it now? Okay.
But, but again, from our standpoint, it's gonna be talking with A coaches, at least the way I see it, our coaches, our advisors, you know, and our staff, about this is how this affects us, I mean, they need to go with their boosters and say, you know, if you're, we're here just been donating for a volunteer coach, um, there's new rules, you know, or there's some issue, because, again, why, again, I don't even know what the booster club is, it's, I mean, they don't have to log anything with us, the coaches are the work between boosters for us, so as we have, and I talked to Bill today, about getting all coaches we need set up, like, early August, to me, that's where we can lay some of this out, and they're gonna have to help, I don't know who's with the booster is, I don't know who, you know, the hockey boosters, you know, they're, the coaches are gonna have to relate, if they wanna have a meeting or something, we could do it, you know, and have more information, we know who the student council advisor is, um, we may or may not know who a prom advisor is right now, you know, and so on, we need to work with those people, and this is how it affects us, you know, that's why I take...
Okay, I'm gonna call it to a vote, uh, it was, I had a motion by Terry and a second by Jen, any further discussion? Hear none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it unanimously. Action item number four, receive superintendent year-end performance evaluation summary and form.
You don't need to ask.
Evaluation form due back June 26th to Michelle Hopkins.
Let me ask you this, we put about a week turnaround, what happened last, well, last go around for the finals, well, was the, um, mid-year, we put two, three weeks, in fact, mid-year, I think Michelle was called and trying to find, and then mid-year was...
Missing out.
Yeah, who's that?
So, is that a rule, I'm just throwing out, does anyone not have a problem with the next week?
I can do it.
Oh, it's good. Are you gonna email it out to us again?
I, I can, I can take an email, the electronic version outside of workbook, and there is a private document that I provided some evidence in there to look at.
So you'll email it to us?
I'll email you the actual form, again, you don't have to identify yourself, you don't have to put a blank envelope, leave it in the office, you know, it's, it's completely up to you, if you don't mind and wanna email it to Michelle, go for it, but, I mean, like you say, um, if you wanna be anonymous, I guess she won't tell me, but, you know, blank liquid secretaries, or slide under my door and put Michelle Hopkins on it or something, or no one can see you, or whatever.
We have a lot of extra sheets, if you have more to write.
Yeah. Use the regular paper.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, action item number five, approve the general fund final revenue budget of thirteen million, three hundred fifty-two thousand, what did I, did I say wrong?
Thirteen million, five hundred seventy... Nothing from that, wait, three...
Oh, oh, Rox.
Well, I'm sorry.
Stop confusing me.
I'm sorry.
Thirteen million, three hundred fifty-two thousand, one hundred forty-three dollars, and final expense budget of thirteen million, five hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars for fiscal year 2018, 2019, undertake a motion.
I'll second.
Uh, I got a motion by Michelle and a second by Terry, any further discussion?
The I would throw in is, I mean, it's been tweaked just slightly with some updated numbers, but for the most part, um, not a drastic change, you know, our predictions of what the legislature would give us is pretty, pretty close, obviously, we don't know where we're gonna settle with each group, we'll see where that comes out, is what it is, we're fine, again, with, um, fund balance, you know, it is going down some, we'll see, as our gamble, let's see how things play out with this audit as well as next year, but...
Okay. Yeah, okay, I, I see it now, all right. Um, I got a motion, uh, any further discussion? Uh, I got a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, carries unanimously. Uh, action item number six, approve the general fund adopted revenue budget of twelve million, nine hundred seventy-one thousand, nine hundred twenty-two dollars, and final expense budget of thirteen million, five hundred fifty, five hundred thirty-two thousand, two hundred and nineteen for fiscal year 2019 to 2020, undertake a motion.
So moved.
I'll second.
Uh, we got a motion by Rox and a second by Mike, all right, any further discussion?
Same comment as before, it's fluid movement.
Okey-dokey, um, no further discussion? Hear none, uh, called to a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Uh, number seven, approve the community education final revenue budget of four hundred and four thousand, three hundred and fourteen, and the expense budget of three hundred ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars for fiscal year 2018, 2019. undertake a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Terry and a second by Rox, any further, uh, Roxanne, any further discussion? All right, hear none, called to a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, carries unanimously. Item number eight, approve the commu-, oh, no, that's the one I did just in, oh, no, that is, okay, it's for the next year. Approve the community education adopted revenue budget of three hundred eighty-eight thousand, two hundred and three dollars, and expense budget of four hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred one dollars for the fiscal year 2019 to 2020, um, and I'll undertake a motion at this time.
I'll second.
I got a motion, motion by Michelle and a second by Terry, any further discussion?
The only thing I would say is, we're, we're gonna have to keep an eye on, it looks, you know, the one we just prior did, that if everything works out as we planned, roughly six grand to the good, um, but rolling things, pushing things forward another year, it looks roughly twenty-one thousand, um, we're gonna have to keep an eye on that, you know, that if our predictions are true, or we end up giving that money somewhere, just a caveat.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? Hear none, called to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, carries unanimously. Approve the food service final revenue budget of five hundred sixty-one thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, and the expense, expense budget of five hundred seventy-nine uh, thousand, nine hundred and eighty-three for dollars for a fiscal year of 2018, 2019. undertake a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion by Roxanne, second by Mike, any further discussion? Hear none, called to a vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carries unanimously. Action item number ten, approve the food service final revenue budget of five hundred sixty thousand, five hundred dollars, and an expense budget of five hundred sixty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-six dollars for fiscal year 2019 to 2020, undertake a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Michelle and a second by Mike, uh, any further discussion? Hear none, we'll call it to a vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it carries unanimously. Uh, administrative reports, Melissa Elementary Principal.
I don't have a lot for you, and she wanted to give me any numbers, mostly because, um, they haven't changed much, obviously, you know, they release that number, and my right hand, ladies, they do those numbers for me and I, and I'll actually take it there and get them, so, I don't have those numbers, but what I will say is that, um, we had a pretty good school year, um, carnival went really well at the last day, it's always a good way to end our school year, like having a half a day with the kids and then a half day at the carnival, and then, um, just recently, last Monday, Jamie and Lori and I went to a workshop together called, um, Twenty-First Century Office, that was offered by MASP, they've been doing it for like eleven years now, and it just, um, gives you tips and strategies on, they call it gifts, on how to run a more efficient office and, and efficient school. Um, they give us a lot of ideas, but some of the ideas sound kinda scary, like, some of them talked about, and they had principals that have done this, um, for several years now, and just talked about how much more efficient it, it has made things, but one of the things they talked about really is moving from having an open door policy to really scheduling out your day, really hour by hour, like, you're scheduling out, um, out time, meeting, like, when you are actually, like, out in classrooms, and you're scheduling actual time when you're editing your emails, you're scheduling time when you... and you're scheduling actual time when you're editing your emails, you're scheduling time when you are, you know, working on grants or paperwork. And then if a teacher has something that they need to talk to you, instead of like coming through the office and always talking like, do you have a minute? Do you have a minute? Cause sometimes they're just kind of dumping and leaving. Sometimes when you say like, okay, yeah, you can schedule time if you're at this time during your prep or whatever, um, they say it kind of like kind of diminishes some of those dumping moments. And just you really become more efficient because your days gone, you're actually getting more done. So it sounds a little scary. We're still talking about how we might make that work or how we might try it. But we did, um, it was a good experience to go and hear some of those strategies, so.
Missy, um, I remember years ago when they had a little, I don't know if you remember Kevin, but when they had something similar when I believe Beth Parmeter was here, maybe you remembered him, that they, they tried a strategy and it kind of sounds like that when they started meeting in the first part of the day with their secretary and they planned out their day. It fizzled. I don't know why, but it might be interesting to know why it fizzled. I don't know if anybody has input on that, but it sounds really good.
I think probably just commitment, right?
Yeah.
Especially when you're making a change and it's different, like you have to make a commitment to that schedule. And then like they said, if you don't have time, like sometimes things come up because that's just the nature of the week. Sometimes there is a student crisis or something that you have to deal with and so your calendar will become a little bit derailed. But then being conscious about that and moving those events to the next day to keep doing that and just really be diligent about implementing that. And, and indeed, they did talk about meeting with the secretaries at least daily, if you couldn't do it daily, maybe weekly. Um, just so that they had a pulse of what was going on too, because there are so many days that you often don't get to talk to one another. But they are often like the front-hand person that deals with more cultural parents or things like that, so.
Well, good luck.
Yeah, well, they'll continue to think about it, cause it changes her, so they'll think about it.
Okay. Anything else? Tim Iverson, secondary principal.
Um, we, our enrollment's at five thirty-nine. Like Missy said, there's soft numbers. We're down seven from last month. We've got Target Services classes going on right now. Sarah Staples is teaching that for students going into seventh and eighth grade and she's covering math and reading and that runs through the, um, Dr. Learning Center. They coordinate that. We also have students enrolled in our summer school program through our alternative school and that's credit recovery. And we've got, I think around nine or 10 kids who are doing that. Annie Sullivan is covering that. We do have case to face each week for four hours and then they're doing online. Um, the custodians went through and removed all our ceiling tiles and lights in like record time and they got that out. And I talked to Tom today and he said that it sounds like they might have been finishing up the ceiling over at Fault Elementary and they're gonna be over here, so they're way ahead of schedule and things are going really well. That's gonna be great to get the, the ceiling and the lights put in downstairs. And then if you get a chance, peek at the gym floor. They're refinishing that and staining and that probably knows better. I don't know how many more days they're gonna be in there.
It's gonna be, they gotta do the, all the lines. And I guess I don't know how quick they can mark things out. You know, they, they had a layer on, just the stain, they're engrafting that up. Um, I guess I haven't asked, but within not very long, they're working on college too. They're actually doing both. Um, so they're here and committed and going. They weren't till, I don't know what time tenant, I mean, they, they're here and working. So I don't think it's gonna be very long. But with that said, the gym is not gonna be open for quite some time. I mean, they say the longer you can let it sit and harden up, the better it's gonna be. I mean, they, they give a two, two-week timeline, but I mean, we're gonna be two, three weeks, you know, of letting it sit and then go. I mean, there are groups that want in tomorrow if they can't, you know, especially when it looks nice. But they just say the longer you can let it sit. We're not gonna wait till, you know, September first, you know, but we're gonna give it a good fall and then something to make sure that it's as good as the.
Anything else, Tim?
Well, please.
Thank you. Um, next up, Kevin Grover, superintendent.
Okay, I just got a few things to run through. Whether you're aware or not, as of June 30th, all of the first-class email is gone. The company is no longer a company, so we are moving to Gmail. Every one of you has a Gmail through this school district. It would be, for instance, your same K Grover at ISB361 dot org. So it's actually an easier email, okay? So if you are using your school email, okay? I talked to Mike today. The best is to contact him. We actually got Gmail accounts back when Dave was here. And I'm guessing, well, if you, some of you were here when Dave was here, they probably never used it or maybe never even knew. But everyone has a school Gmail account. Mike can reset and work with you on the password. The best is just to give him an email and he can shoot you an email. You know what I'm saying? We can set it up the same thing. There's ways to have that forward to if you'd like using a different account. Um, maybe cause you're, you're Hunter, you're old. That's fine, cause I do everything to it as long as I'm consistent if it ever needed. So, um, June 30th, that's gone, okay, so.
So these are ready to go now, though?
They're ready to go now. And I talked to him today, cause I thought he made me say, here, I'll give you a list. And then the first night, but he just said, it's easiest if they shoot me an email and he'll shoot, you know, reset however, scramble. Then when you log in, you put whatever you want.
Our, our current emails, are they going, the ones that we have?
He's gonna have it forward.
No, I mean, but will he have the, will he retain the current emails so that, um, we meet the federal guidelines for that?
Yep. What's, what's happening is, is it's gonna be a, well, we're gonna have access to it. If you have a certain amount stored in a certain file and they have to be saved on, you know, hard drive. He's also working so that he can forward everything from the ISB361 dot K ball dot M N long-term to this Gmail. So, I mean, but you're just not gonna be able to get in everything. The other thing I will give you a heads up on is I went in like in MSBA, things that I can change, Department of Ed. You know, we're slowly but surely putting the new, um, contacts in. Um, and so some of you might actually get, if we get in, you might see something from MSBA saying, you know, because I've been changing and sometimes we change an email or something to get a notification going, someone's changed your, you know, but it's just like anything. We have addresses out a million different places. So it's gonna take a little bit of time. On the webpage, for instance, we're going out and updating and changing things, changing your contacts, so.
Do we still click on the employee email button on the website though to get our email?
Well, I'm not sure. That's gonna, that's gonna have to be switched. You know, right now, I don't go to first class. And first class is still open.
I might link it to it, but.
But he's working on, like, or I should say, they're working on different conversions, you know? Like on our computers, we have a first-class icon. Um, they're getting a Gmail icon, you know, um, fancy stuff. So my guess is that, I don't know if that employee button, or, you know, will be there, cause you can get to Google from anywhere. I mean, I put it, wasn't Google, I think I'm pulling out right now. You know, certain things are easier, so. Um, Mike, Mike's email, M Blazy at ISB361 dot org. Second thing, uh, Rotary, and I'm throwing it out. I was contacted about being a Rotary member and, um, just give me a little bit of, um, history. Um, great organization, but a requirement in the past was for the most part to go to a once-a-week Wednesday lunch meeting. And again, I just, I have a board meeting once a month with this, uh, Special Ed Co-op on Wednesday, so, you know, that threw that out. And, you know, being committed to something, I didn't feel that I could. They went to what they call, Ted, you can help me look like a business.
Yeah, like a corporate membership.
Corporate membership. And I guess what I'm asking is roughly three hundred dollars a year and you can have four members belong. And that counts as your team. Obviously, you know, going twice a year, you're not gonna stay up on things. But I guess my thought is I think the school Rotary does different things for us. I think we should belong for three hundred. Probably, and I'm not stuck, myself, Rachel, and possibly the two principals being the four members. And I would think, you know, again, I can go a chunk of the time. And I think Rachel would be a good one to go, you know, a good chunk of the time. Principals, you know, if there's something they want or he, we could be an active. And so I guess I'm throwing it out unless you guys think it's not.
Well, well, you, I can see where Kevin, you and the two principals meet, so you can share info about the Rotary. But does Rachel get in on conversations like that? So, cause otherwise, well, I don't understand.
So honestly, that wouldn't matter that much, uh, at the meetings. What would matter the most is that you guys, um, like when Kevin couldn't go or you wanted to go or something. You can have all four people show up, but, um, you have to, you're not have to, you're supposed to have somebody there every week. And so that's, that's the more important thing. There's nothing that Rotary doesn't happen where if you go to one meeting every now and then, that you'll, you'll be up to date on quite a bit of it as long as somebody's coming.
I just think your community ed would have a lot of community stuff that.
Yeah, there is. It's just that would.
She would be a good member and no sense having two, you know, memberships. I mean, community ed could have their own technical one.
So if a, another thing that would be cool is if a teacher, it, it's tough for teachers and it's the same for nurses, uh, for Rotary to get them involved because of the, the teacher schedules change so much. But for a year, a, a teacher could be, while their schedule permits it, um, go to if you wanted. So it just has, they just have to send the name to the Rotary Board and that's it.
So I guess unless someone's completely opposed, I'm gonna go.
No, I think it'd be a good idea and then maybe after a year, you guys can talk about it and say, hmm, I, that worked well or it didn't.
It's working. The college is doing a corporate membership right now and it's working out for them, so.
Um, in front of you, there is a letter, um, I was approaching, this letter is kind of, what was I saying? Written in a way that you know a lot of people don't know if something's a rec thing, if it's a school thing, if it has nothing to do with either. Um, but it was approached, they, this group, I'm just gonna speak, um, from, in a non-formal method. But, uh, this group is starting a swim club, if that's agreed and go for it. Um, similar to what was across the river in the past is my understanding. They have been in contact with Rachel, um, as far as booking, uh, pool time. There is pool time available, so we would rent pool time. Um, we have first come, first service for whether it's swimming, whether it's community ed events, if, you know, whatever. Um, but their interest, they're looking at two hours a day, five days a week, starting this fall, possibly some Saturday time. Technically, it is from when a kid can start swimming up through death, if you will. I mean, it can be ninety-year-old people in there, whether they wanna keep, compete, whether they want it for exercise. Um, it is a, in essence, a for-profit, meaning they pay, you know, they're not out to make a million dollars type deal, um, but they pay an instructor. It's a business type model.
Is it evening hours?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, it's evening, you know, they're gonna get the seven to nine, eight to 10, you know, the later stuff. The question they had was would the district be interested in giving them any type of a break in the rental rate? Right now, well, I'm just telling you, right now, we charge forty.
You got some Michelle things on that?
I think not. I don't think we charge enough for pool time as it is.
Um, and, and that's the question to you. We don't have formal action on here is, um, do you wanna work? Um, starting out, I have no idea how many people they're gonna have. Is it, you know, is a coach gonna make some money on it? Yeah, they're gonna be paid. I don't know what they're being paid. That's none of my business. Um, could it be good for our swimmers? Could be. Is it instrumental? Why, you know, um, but that was.
What do we charge now?
We charge forty dollars an hour. It's actually fifty for birthday parties because birthday party would require, I think, two lifeguards. Um, they have their own insurance, you know, and obviously we'll have to get a copy of that. When they get the sleep form, their, um, coach will be certified lifeguard. So that we don't need a lifeguard if they're in there, um, and we'll have that credentially. Um, and for the most part, I'll be honest, you know, it's, it is what it is, um, you know.
But we will be paying the lifeguards or they will?
No, 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 we won't have to pay lifeguards.
But if we charge forty dollars an hour, we pay lifeguards now, right? So that would be, without lifeguards, it should be cheaper to the district, right?
I mean, but as far as what our pool costs us to run, just in general, we don't charge enough to anybody.
So.
We should be charging more to people.
Well, it depends if, you know, I'm just gonna throw it out, you know, throw an example. We rented it out not long ago to, uh, National Park. I mean, yeah, I mean, if, if you were running that pool to make the money, it covered every cost, just like the arena across the road. You couldn't do it for forty bucks now. But on the other hand, we've tried, you know, our, our, um, theory is let's recoup our custodial costs, our lifeguard costs. And then people can use the pool or use the arena. That's a good thing when it's available, you know? And so the same thing, you know, I mean, I'm okay with the forty dollars an hour. I mean, you can look at your rates at any time along, um, but they.
If we got forty dollars an hour, would we recoup our custodial costs? How do you say, Michelle, that you're saying we're not?
As a pool is expensive.
The pool is very expensive, John.
You run, run a pool at your house, for instance. And again, there's a levy covering a lot of the costs, you know, but I mean, even the maintenance, not people, we need, you know, the pool is not a money-making thing unless you wanna charge, I don't know, a hundred and fifty bucks an hour. I'm just guessing.
That's what they charge over at Francis, you know, for a buck an hour.
So this is, this is what, this is what I would recommend and it can be different from the other board members. But I would, I would recommend giving them a reduced rate if it was me, um, making the decision. But, um, for one year and between now and then, we can address all the, um, issues or things that Michelle's bringing up right now and find out if there is a real, a better, more realistic rate.
Sales tax on it, so that sales is six hundred. So we get less than forty dollars.
Yeah, well, you can say forty dollars plus sales tax or, I mean, whatever you, uh, whatever is a fair thing to reduce it to. But that's, that's what I would like to do. But I, I mean, I agree with you on it is a lot more to run. But if our policy's forty dollars right now, it's in the same principle, the forty.
I think we charge them what our current rate is for the first year or six months or however, and actually see where it goes. Um, but this is a very poor profit endeavor. Trust me.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. If they're, if it's a private business coming in.
This is a business. This is, the people that sign up for this, this isn't just, uh, it's not a free thing for kids to do.
I think, uh, you know, let's try and revisit it. At some point, seems like, you know, I think it's reasonable to say, you know, let's revisit that question at six months, see how things are going or whether, you know what I mean, like.
Should definitely be revisited.
I don't know, I mean, I don't understand, I don't know. I feel like as, as a private entity, they're, they have the potential to make quite a bit of money on this and it's pretty reasonable, forty bucks an hour for two hours, pretty reasonable. They're gonna be making decent amount if they get enough people coming in.
And again, if, if you wanted to come, any, you could come speak there, obviously, could. I don't know if the concern is, you know, we might start with four people, six people and can, well, I'm just throwing it out there. I don't know if that's the case or if they have forty people sitting in the wings, you know, ready to go, um, you know, I, I don't know.
I, does the arena feel like it's the same thing then? You're feeling like the same thing for the arena? We're not, we, we allow people to do things, to use the arena and they're not, we're not making the money we think we should for the arena either, so it's not any.
Are any of them businesses that do that?
Yeah, I'm trying to see if there's a similar.
You know, it's, it's kind of like summer hockey. I mean, for the most part, I'm just throwing it out there. The boards prior to this have looked at that as more of a community service where a good chunk of our kids go, a good chunk of grandparents or, uh, grandkids maybe from out of town come and go. Because again, eight hundred dollars a week for the arena is not a going rate. I mean, and again, and I'm just telling you where it's come from is, you know, that, yeah, Kevin Gordon and the coaches over there make some money. You know, you try figuring out what they, they don't have much for expense. You know, he has some insurance he has to get, um, and, you know, they provide, I think, snacks and this and that, but, um.
So yes, I mean, even that's a point of discussion, maybe going forward as we're looking at ways to, um, improve our bottom line. I mean, budgetary-wise, looking at some of these things and maybe even comparing with other schools because we've also discussed not being able to offer all the sports that we offer just because of the costs associated with them.
Back to that is, you know, that's not a huge, I mean, that's given the arena away, but we, the groups before looked at it that this is good for the community. During the winter, we have very little nice time. And just being honest, but if we do, same thing. We go about forty dollars an hour. I mean, a custodian depending on where they are on the pay scale, twenty to twenty-five dollars an hour. So at forty bucks, you know, put some taxes on that and, you know, we're probably covering our costs. If we can have an hour for a birthday party and it was used, good news. If not, it's not there.
Yeah. I guess I'd like to say that I think, you know, with, with Erin and Ashley, I know that they're trying to experiment with a lot of things probably. know that they're trying to experiment with a lot of things probably. And I'm not so sure that it may or may not go. As any new business, I'd like to encourage them and not because of a business. I'd like to encourage them as a community service. Because our community is so small, we, we should offer as much as we can for people in our community just to keep people living here. I would encourage giving them a slightly reduced rate just to try it for a year and then revisit it again in a year. And if they're making lots of profit, it looks like then discuss having.
I guess I would like to see what their business plan is going into this before we decide to give them a reduced rate.
So it sounds like we're split a little bit here. Do you, uh, you guys want to weigh in to help?
Why don't I bring, I will get and let them come to a five-minute presentation. It's scheduled to start this fall, so we don't need an answer today. I said I would bring the letter, you know, if there was a consensus of.
I'd just like to see their rate schedule, what they're going to charge the kids to attend and.
I think that's fair.
You know, what, what, uh, they must have some sort of plan going into it.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fair to ask.
And then they probably have an idea on child's life, which they think they can handle in the pool. So they're looking at what their potential.
Perfect. Um, two more things. Um, first one, just an update. We have zero apps for our music position. We will repost again. It's up to 22nd, 26th. Let it go again. But if not, come in July, we're going to be looking at some, you know, trying to figure some out. So if anyone has ideas, um, you know, don't want choir to go away necessarily. Obviously, we need prep coverage at the elementary, which that is part of it. So for some reason, music will just keep me in the loop. Um, I was contacted last, well, sometime last week, um, inquiring, and the person was pleading to bring back the printed school calendar. Well, no, no, I just said I would throw it out there. Um, to be honest with you, I think even if we were going to, it's kind of went off my radar, to be honest. I think we're late in the game right now. It would technically have to go to print probably mid-July because they were available at first August. Um, again, I won't be, I won't disagree. I miss having it on my wall, whether it's in the office or at home, if I gotten somewhat used to going to our district. Um, yeah, I know. You know, I'm just throwing it out there.
How many complaints have you gotten or requests?
You know, last fall, God, I'm not going to say overwhelmingly. I mean, I, people that, you're just like myself. I miss it. I'm not going to disagree with that. Um, I did inquire a little bit with, I haven't found another district that actually did produce that. Um, you know, there was ideas, would a sports group want to take it to a disaffunder issue? You know, and again, it wasn't a money issue. We got donations for the most part to cover the cost of producing and maybe even faddling. Um, it was not being accurate other than in the fall. Um, and it does take time and effort.
Resources are.
Booster group did it. Where are they going to go to, to get all the information? It's only as good as what community ed will give, what bill will give, you know, what we can give them, you know? That's a balance. I mean, you know, if it's something, the group really feels we, I mean, you don't want to wait, but that's one thing we've been hit with, you know, make a decision. I'm committed to going to electronic wall, but again, I know.
Did they say why? Other than it's convenient? I mean, did they have a, the person that requested it?
It was a grandparent, but that's how they kept track, um, you know, for the most part of what the grandkid was involved with. And again, used it just like every one of us used to. They were not against paying five bucks for 10 bucks. And I, and I was honest, I don't, it wasn't a money issue, you know? I mean, unless we want to do it and make money, you know?
You just pointed them the inaccuracies.
Yeah, I went through and, I mean, I'm not going to say they didn't understand, but you know.
But they still wanted it.
They still wanted it.
So I said I would let you know. I said I was going to throw that to you as far as, you know, um.
But they can print it themselves.
Print it. Um, I think daughter or one of them does kind of print a copy. It's not the same. So unless, I hear differently from you and like you say, we would have to move it every day on it to get anything. And I, I'm not recommending that.
Do you feel like overall it was, the calendar online has been kept up pretty well?
Yes, I think so. I mean, because, well, A, I've kept certain things up myself if, you know, and there's stuff on there, um, you know, when we get them, for instance, and I'm just throwing it out there. Um, as soon as we get stuff, it goes out, it goes on now. Um.
All the sports stuff, I don't.
Athletics is consistently, because that's just part of the system. Um, you know, I can't speak to, you know, Missy was, we were talking the other day about they can put out or we'll put elementary stuff on.
I'll say we did not receive a report.
I use it, you know, but again, looking at concerts, that stuff was on and it was after it. It might have been a year ago or two years ago, but it depends if it got changed or not. You know, prom, very able to move around with it. It's true. Hall of Fame changed this year. Again, technically not our deal, but something that's on our calendar, we moved it, you know? And so certain things, especially in the spring, definitely were after it than it was before. Either it wasn't on or it possibly was on a wrong day.
Can, like for athletics, I could get a notification if a, if a game has been canceled or rescheduled. Is the same thing for like, you know, like I never checked the, I didn't routinely check the calendar, but like, could I have said I want to, you know, if this, if something gets changed that I would get notified or, you know?
Anything you can do on Google. I mean, because can't you get notifications on Google? I, I'm not a Google expert. So I mean, like, like I use a district calendar. I view my own calendar and I can activate things, you know, even on my phone anytime, you know, change. Um, we're working on now, you know, one of the things, like as we go to Gmail, I mean, you can have secretaries or different people be able to add things to our personal, you know, just like not everyone has access to the district calendar, for instance, but certain people do. And that's the nice part is Tim's secretaries, Missy's secretaries, they can have access, you know? Those are people that are probably getting those dates, you know, from those, um, business office. They can throw overboard. You know, it's, instead of it all having to go to one person, make sure it all got, you know, um, so I think it's a good thing, but it's a change.
Okay.
Last thing I have, and before we go to the others, just a reminder, um, 4798 negotiations tomorrow, Mike, Tony and Jen, 9:00 AM. Um, also the 26th, unless we settle it tomorrow.
Where are you?
And then.
Here?
Here. Well, we'll meet in my office. I've got them ready to go. Um, and then, uh, 5:10 is not coming back till July 15. And as far as 3:31, haven't heard yet from them.
What's up with that?
I think they're getting together to work on their plan tomorrow, but I've also heard from Wednesday and Thursday.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Moving on to committee reports, Community Ed Advisory Board.
Um, I guess I really have nothing to report. I know that they had the camp invention. I believe that was really successful.
My son was pumped about that.
Yeah.
My, my son came home with extra trash, so.
You're supposed to look at it as an invention.
No, no, no. There was the inventions, but he literally brought the trash home with him. Yeah. So, yeah.
So I think there's still good things going on. Um, I know they have some activities for the summer that was presented at the last meeting. And also, um, I know Rachel's supposed to supply a report for us on a monthly basis as to what activities are going on. And I know there's been some discussion on the fiscal portion of it, which I think is still a process and, and work, but, uh, we should be able to see at least the classes. So more follow-up.
All right. Thank you very much. 4.2 Recreation Commission. You guys met?
Yeah, I, um, serve on the Budget Committee and, uh, we met and put together the budget for almost a year and, uh, our budget's solid. Um, it looked good and, uh, the members of the Budget Committee were extremely happy. So, um, we'll be moving along and presenting it to the Rec Commission as a whole, so.
Awesome.
Wednesday.
Thank you very much. Um, that's all. Any other committee reports? I'm assuming not. All right. We're going to go into a closed session. Uh, the meeting will be closed as permitted by Minnesota.